Good evening. We're going to get started. The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one is now called to order. Mr. Nolan.
Here.
Mr. Krasinski.
Here.
Mr. Katanzarite.
Here.
Mr. Kana Ricky.
Here.
Ms. Hess.
Here.
Mr. File.
Here.
Mr. Talion.
Here.
Mr. Root.
Here.
Mr. Martin is here. Okay. Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda, our first readings. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Before we get the first readings, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one public, public meeting?
Move.
For a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The minutes from the January twelfth public hearing are approved. Next, we have first readings. Clerk, will you please be, read bill number sixteen twenty-one? For Hammond?
Oh, see, somebody muted me. And it wasn't my wife. So, okay, ready? Sixteen twenty-one, an ordinance amending and supplementing Title fifteen land uses, chapter one fifty-four, planning and zoning of the San Francisco County Code is amended for property located with five-two-six-nine-fourth State Road nine thirty-three from our single-family district to C Commercial District. But it's not. Petitioner is D E V five-two-six-nine-fourth State Road nine thirty-three LLC.
Bill number sixteen twenty-one is assigned to the land use planning committee?
Bill seventeen twenty-one, an ordinance of the seven, of the San Francisco County Council, providing a COVID-nineteen hazard pay stipend to twenty-twenty general election workers, petitioners Diana Hess and Joseph Kenarecki.
Bill number seventeen twenty-one is assigned to the Human Services Criminal Justice Committee. That concludes first readings for this evening. Next on the agenda, we have resolution, bill number eight twenty-one. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
A resolution of the St. Joseph County Council of Indiana approving and authorizing certain actions and proceedings with respect to certain proposed economic development, revenue bonds, and related matters, petitioner economic development.
Petitioner?
Mr. President, members of the council, Bill Shalio with the Department of Infrastructure, Planning and Growth, here before you tonight to speak on the inducement resolution, bill number eight dash twenty-one. We had a discussion about this project at the committee meeting, but just as, as a bit of a refresher, Flaherty and Collins out of Indianapolis is working with Ice Miller, a local legal, or a legal firm out of Indianapolis, to put together project financing to make improvements at the Emerald Point Apartment Project at five-three-eight-eight-zero Generations Drive. This is a great opportunity to upgrade this existing housing project, give it new life, move it forward, but the first step in the process is the step today where we ask for your approval on this inducement resolution. Once this is approved, then it goes through a whole series of steps with the Economic Development Commission, and then we'll allow for moving forward with this project. If there's any questions, there are members of the project team on this call, and, and either I or they would be happy to answer those questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Thank you. We will now open the public hearing on bill number eight-eight twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on bill eight twenty-one. May I have a motion on the bill?
For approval.
Second? Who, who made, was that Mr. Kana Ricky?
Katanzarite on the motion.
Katanzarite, okay. Sorry. The motion to pass bill number eight twenty-one was made by Councilman Katanzarite, and it was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further comments from any council member on bill number eight dash twenty-one? Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Talion?
Yes.
Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number eight dash twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next, we have salary amendments. Clerk, will you please read bill number eleven, eleven twenty-one?
Eleven twenty-one, it's an ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six twenty, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees in San Francisco County for the year two thousand and twenty-one, petitioner auditor. This is, as I mentioned before, Susan Bybee is moving toward retirement. Instead of retiring, this month she agreed to stay on for a few months and to help train the next person, who'd be Patty Henry, in payroll, and then to assist with implementation of parts of the ERP program once, and help with accounts payable, once Katie Bishop goes on maternity leave in June.
I like you. Uh, let me see.
That's all I have. I'm one line out there in, in, uh, with folks, but that's all I got, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Hess, committee report, please.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, bill number eleven twenty-one comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions from council for Mr. Hammond? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on bill number eleven twenty-one. Does anyone wish to address the council in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on bill eleven twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for passage.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number eleven twenty-one was made by Councilman Katanzarite. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further comments from any council member on eleven twenty-one?
Right. Okay, awesome.
Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Talion?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
And Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number eleven twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number twelve twenty-one?
Twelve twenty-one, an ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six twenty, the same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of San Francisco County for the year two thousand and twenty-one, petitioner coroner.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. Martin, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner? Petitioner? Is there anyone from the coroner's office on this, on, on the call? Do I hear a motion?
Move to send it back to committee.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Not unless she shows up or something.
Pardon?
Not unless she shows up, like we've had happen before.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Bill number twelve twenty-one goes back to committee. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number thirteen twenty-one?
Thirteen twenty-one. An ordinance amending, uh, ordinance seventy-six twenty, the same being, uh, ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of San Francisco County for the year two thousand and twenty-one, petitioner adult probation.
Mr. Krasinski, committee, committee report, please.
President, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening, council. Jesse Carlton with St. Joseph County Adult Probation Department, offices located on the fourth floor of the county city building. I come to you this evening requesting approval to appropriate and amend the funds on, that we receive from the Indiana Department of Corrections. Um, these are grant funds, and this just sets the salaries and benefits and everything for those positions that we have received from DOC. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any ques, any questions from council? For Mr. Carlton? Hearing none. We will now open the public hearing on bill number thirteen twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion on bill thirteen twenty-one?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number thirteen twenty-one was made by Councilwoman Hess, and it was seconded by Councilman Kana Ricky. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Talion? Mr., Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number thirteen twenty-one was passed by a unanimous vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number fourteen twenty-one?
An ordinance amending ordinance seventy-six twenty, same being an ordinance establishing salaries and fixing the number of employees of San Francisco County for the year two thousand and twenty-one, petitioner auditor.
Mr. Krasinski, committee report, please.
President, Morton, this comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Good evening. This is John Murphy, chief deputy auditor. This salary ordinance amend, it's the, it's in relationship to the COVID fund reappropriation ordinance that we talked about at the committee meeting. This salary ordinance reinstates for two thousand and twenty-one the same terms as the two thousand and twenty salary ordinance as far as a part-time housekeeper, a portage manor quality controller, a nurse, an isolation pay in those, at portage manor. So, the rates are, have not changed. It's still the same, it's still the same dollar amount, but we've just updated the two thousand and twenty-one salary ordinance. I hope to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from council for Mr. Murphy? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on bill number fourteen twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on bill fourteen twenty-one. Do I, do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Do I hear a second? A motion to pass bill number fourteen twenty-one was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilman Kana Ricky. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Diana Hess?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Mr. Talion?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number fourteen twenty-one was, um, passed by a vote of nine to zero. I believe Dr. Jordan, uh, Dr. Jordan from the coroner's office is calling in for bill twelve twenty-one.
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Nolan, do you want to?
Mr. Mr. Morton?
Yes.
I, uh, make a motion. We take bill twelve twenty-one out of committee here tonight.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second to take bill twelve twenty-one out of committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Dr. Jordan?
Yes. My apologies. Are you still there?
Yes, go ahead.
My apologies. Um, I was just, um, motioning or hoping that you guys would go through with the changing of the salaries of the two coroners to deputy, for my, uh, chief deputy coroners, and then, uh, that we spoke last time. And, uh, change basically not, there's not going to be any increase in monies. It's just moving them to, uh, the chief, two chief coroners, and then the two deputy coroners.
Any questions from council for Dr. Jordan? Hearing none. We'll open the public hearing on bill number twelve twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing on bill twelve twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
For approval.
Second.
Do I hear a second? Motion to pass bill number twelve twenty-one was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further discussion from council on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Talion?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number twelve twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next on the agenda, excuse me, we have public comment, public hearing and public comment on fiscal matters. All financial issues were heard and discussed, discussed at our January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one committee meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Is there any, anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of any financial issue on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. Public comment is now closed. Clerk, will you please read bill number nine twenty-one?
An ordinance appropriate in transferring monies to the purposes here and specified for the several apartments here listed, say, just the county government.
May I have a motion on bill nine twenty-one?
For approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass bill number nine twenty-one was made by Councilman Nolan. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
No.
No? Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Talion? Uh, Mr. Talion?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to one. I heard that.
Thank you. Let the, let the record show that bill number nine twenty-one was passed by a vote of eight to one. Next, uh, we have under land use planning, we have bill number one twenty-one. Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, it's bill number one dash twenty-one comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
This is Ryan Fellows with Area Plan Commission. May I share my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, these are, uh, the same slides that you saw during the committee, so there's really not anything changed, but for the, um, alley vacation, I'm gonna let Abby take that. I believe Abby Wiles, the executive director, is on and available right now.
Yes, I apologize. This is Abby. I'm having an issue with my camera. I might have to take myself off and just speak, but this property, uh, the alley vacation is located at the property where the Kreider Vet Clinic, uh, is located, well, uh, soon to be former Kreider Vet Clinic. Um, there's forced criteria that staff needs to, and the council needs to consider, uh, when looking at an alley vacation. The first is that the vacation would not hinder growth or development. Uh, the county has no intention of improving this type of way, and access to State Road twenty-three would, uh, not be permitted at this location, as it would threaten public safety. The vacation would not make access to the lands of the aggrieved person by means of public way difficult or inconvenient. It's not being used for access purposes, and there's no plans to do so. It wouldn't hinder access to, uh, the public, uh, the public's access to a church, school, or other public building. Um, it doesn't currently provide access to any one of these places, and it's not anticipated that it ever would, and that the vacation would not hinder the use of a public way by neighborhood in which it's located. Again, uh, there's no, uh, intent to improve the alley, uh, access State Road twenty-three would not be permitted, and Main Street already provides adequate connection. So, staff has reviewed the alley vacation requests and asks for the council's favorable, uh, consideration and approval.
Thank you. Any questions from council for area plan? Petitioner?
My name is Terry Lang from Lang Feeny and Associates, address seven fifteen South Michigan Street in South Bend, to represent the petitioner. Uh, the area planning commission staff has summed up the alley vacation very well. Our property owner that we're working with is the, uh, recent purchaser of the former Kreider Veterinary Clinic, and also owns the property on the east side of said alley, and desires to vacate it. It's never been improved, and, uh, like, uh, the staff said, it would create a hazard, uh, for access to State Road twenty-three that close to the, uh, intersection there.
Counsel for the petitioner? Thank you. We will now open, open the public hearing on bill number one twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish, wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing on bill number one twenty-one. Do I hear a motion on the bill?
Motion for passage.
Second.
A motion to pass bill number one twenty-one was made by Councilman Katanzarite. It was seconded by Councilwoman Hess. Any further council discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Uh, Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Talion? Mr. Talion?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number one twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number four dash twenty-one?
An ordinance of the San Francisco County Council amending Title fifteen, chapter one fifty-four land usage of San Francisco County Code by amending sections one-five-four dot four-seven-eight to amend controlled uses and adult uses by revising the list of uses in adult business is not permitted to be located within five hundred feet of, petitioner Eric Plantage.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please.
Mr. President, bill number four dash twenty-one comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Area plan?
Good evening, Ryan Fellows again, and this is, uh, something we already discussed in committee, so won't belabor it, but it's simply to update the list of uses that, uh, in an adult business may not be located within five hundred feet of. Um, there, when the city of South Bend updated their zoning book, they removed a bunch of zoning district names that we were referencing in our code book, and so if there isn't a new adult business that's to be located, we want to make sure that it is located outside of that five hundred feet within, so that, uh, things are closer, couldn't be closer to, uh, residential uses and similar uses. And so this just seeks to update the code book to have the same purpose that was intended. Um, it doesn't seek to do any other change, but I'd be happy to answer any questions or going into more detail.
Any questions from council for area plan? Thank you. Thank you. We'll now open the public hearing on bill number four twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none. The public hearing on bill number four twenty-one is now closed. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number four twenty-one was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Kana Ricky. Any further comments from any council member on this bill? Hearing none. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Krasinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Aye.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Talion?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzarite?
Yes.
Mr. Kenarecki?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number four twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Clerk, will you please read the next bill? Bill number one seventeen dash twenty?
An ordinance amending and supplementing Title fif, Title Four, uh, land usage, chapter one fifty-four, planning and zoning of San Francisco County Code is amended for property located at one-three-six-four-four McKinney Highway, from C Commercial District, Site Plan Specific, to C Commercial District, not Site Plan Specific, petitioner Horizon Blue Investment, Safe.
Mr. Nolan, committee report, please, sir.
Mr. President, bill number one seventeen dash twenty comes to the full council with a favor, I'm sorry, without a recommendation.
Thank you very much. Area plan?
Yes, again, this is Ryan Fellows with Area Plan, and as we discussed in the Yes, again, this is Ryan Fellows with Area Plan, and as we discussed in the sitting committee, I won't, uh, go over it in much detail unless we have questions. But this is, uh, near the corner of Current and McKinley. This is the, what used to be the man's Corvette. As you can see, the current zoning, as discussed, is C Commercial District, but it is site plan specific to that one use. And the application seeks to unhinge that connection, unlock that connection, so that it could be used for any C commercial purpose. Across the road is the industrial district. To the west is a vacant lot owned by Penn Air's, uh, schools. And then just beside that lot is the, uh, creek. And then after that is the fire station, and then to the south are single-family homes. And we went over some detail about what the commercial district includes, what kind of, uh, uses might happen there. And we also reviewed the, what the required setbacks are, what the existing setbacks are. And, um, if there were to be some improvement to the building or some addition that might necessitate, um, that would necessitate a site plan review, then we would review the, um, the situation in plan review and then make them compliant with any code requirements needed. Here's a picture of the property looking to the south. The front setback is a hundred and twenty-five feet plus or minus. And, uh, this is on the back of the property where you can see how far back it is from the existing single-family homes, which is plus or minus sixty feet right now. And then looking to the east along that same back line where the homes are, um, again, plus or minus sixty feet. Whereas the existing, uh, cor, man's Corvette, which was site plan, which was approved in two thousand. And the new site plan that submitted is just the existing site. No changes are, uh, presented at this time. And just, uh, flipping back to the code book to review what full landscaping would look like if there were to be improvement. Then this would give us an opportunity to put these improvements in place, which right now with the existing site plan, they're not required to have right now. And then we reviewed what the requirements are for lighting, if there were that, those improvements, what those would be. And then this is the dumpster that's on site right now. Again, the existing site plan does not have an enclosure required, but if they were to make any improvements to the site, then enclosure would be required to those standards. And then continuing on with if there were to be any kind of new signs, this would require a new sign permit, and they'd have to follow those standards. And then we discussed a little bit about Willow Creek and how, what the distance is, and it is indeed downhill towards the creek bank. And, um, there's this kind of a better overall view where you can kind of see the creek a little bit closer. And there was a question about what would hazardous material storage, what would happen with that? The building department would inspect the storage for chemicals or hazardous materials as part of an inspection for new construction, a rehab, or an addition project prior to a certificate of occupancy being issued. And any subsequent inspections would be completed by the capable fire department. And this comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission, and we reviewed that this is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. And then looking at the, uh, land use plan in particular, there's the Mishawaka Capital Avenue Ford Ore Plan, which does contemplate this area for commercial use. And then on to the rest of the criteria, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? For area plan? Thank you. Petitioner?
Hello, my name is Michael Courier of Jones Petrie Rafinsky, three two five South Lafayette, South Bend, Indiana. I'm here representing, um, my client today. Um, I have had further discussion with them based upon our previous meetings, and they are willing to, um, remove some of the uses that are allowed in C. Um, there are seven of them to be exact, uh, would be number sixteen on the list would be a butcher. Uh, number twenty-three on the list is crematory. Number twenty-four, dry cleaning. Number twenty-seven, exterminator shop. Number thirty, a gas station. Number fifty-one, pawn shop. And number seventy-two, tavern. Is with these conditions that they are asking for your vote to approve this rezon.
Thank you. Any questions from council for the petitioner? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number one seventeen dash twenty. Does anyone, anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on bill number one seventeen twenty. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Katanzright?
Motion for passage.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number one seventeen dash twenty was made by Councilman Katanzright. It was seconded by Councilman Kennericki. Any further comments from any council member on bill one seventeen twenty?
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Katanzright?
I just want to thank, uh, Mr. Courier from Jones Petrie Rafinsky and, uh, thank his client for the willingness to be able to, uh, exempt those seven different uses, and they've been great to work with. And, uh, again, in the conversation I've had since our last meeting with the Penn Township trustee, she couldn't be here tonight. Um, she too is appreciative of those, uh, restrictions that they've agreed to, and, uh, I fully support this rezoning to C commercial, to allow the other uses, with the exception of the seven that Mr. Courier mentioned.
Hi, this is Abby with Area Plan. I just want to confirm, I believe, and I could be wrong, but the motion that was made was motion to accept, but I didn't, uh, hear that the commitments were attached to the request. Is the intent to include the commitment that those seven uses would be prohibited?
Yeah. Would you like me to amend, amend my motion, Mr. Morton?
Yes.
I'd like to, uh, amend my motion previously stated to ask that we amend bill, I forgot the number, is it one seventeen twenty?
One seventeen twenty.
Yeah, I'd like to amend bills one seventeen twenty and to omit the uses that Mr. Courier just, um, agreed to. And I would amend the bill to include those omitted uses on that property.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? The eyes have it on the amendment. So I'll ask for a motion for bill number one seventeen twenty as amended. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
A motion to pass bill number one seventeen dash twenty as amended was made by Councilman Katanzright, and it was seconded by Councilman Kennericki. Any further comments from any council member on bill one seventeen dash twenty as amended? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Kraschinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Mr. File?
Hi.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright?
Yes.
Kennerackey?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number one seventeen dash twenty as amended was passed by a vote of nine to zero. Next, under miscellaneous, we have bill number fifteen twenty-one. Clerk, will you please read the bill?
In Norton County, appropriating monies for the purpose here specified by petitioner New Carlisle Olive Township Public Library.
Ms. Hess, committee report?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, bill fifteen twenty-one comes to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Petitioner?
Hi, it's Stephanie Murphy from New Carlisle Public Library, four oh eight South Bray in New Carlisle. And we're requesting the council's approval of this appropriation to correct the error in our budget, which we believe was caused by, uh, glitch in the gateway's budget software. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing on bill number fifteen twenty-one. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this bill? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the bill? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on bill number fifteen twenty-one. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion to pass bill number fifteen twenty-one was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Nolan. Any further council discussion on this bill? Hearing none, clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Um, sorry, Mr. File?
Hi.
Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Mr. Katanzright? Yes.
Mr. Kennerackey?
Yes.
Mr. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Kraschinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you. Let the record show that bill number fifteen twenty-one was passed by a vote of nine to zero. That, that ends public hearing as far as our bills for tonight. Next, we have unfinished business.
Mr. President?
Mr. Nolan?
Could, uh, could be considered unfinished or new business, I guess, but we can take care of it here is. I'm sure everyone recalls quite vividly, a year ago at this time, we passed a resolution, uh, I guess, in favor of the guaranteed energy savings program and the manager and the, um, energy manager that we put in place and asking the, all the departments of the county to, uh, kind of help facilitate what they're trying to do there. Problem is that right after we did that COVID pandemic, it never really got ushered out to the departments. There's, they never were really presented with this resolution that the council supported. We never got it to the commissioners to get them to sign on as well. I'd like to pick that ball up. Um, we've got this energy manager on the payroll here, I guess not really the payroll, but he's part of the, uh, energy savings project. We've got him for a little time left. I'd like to get, to send this to the commissioners, get their official approval, and then get it out to all the department heads and try to get the most we can, biggest bang we can for our buck with the time we have left with this energy manager and get people's, uh, kind of get their habits back when they get back into the building here, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, right Frank? Um, get their habits back to where they should be and, uh, move forward with this program. I just kind of like, uh, if anybody has an issue with that, I guess, speak it out, or I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna send it along and ask them to do just that.
Mr. Morton?
Mr. Katanzright?
Uh, Mr. Nolan, I, I wasn't quite clear on what you're, I know, I know you mentioned COVID and the change-up of the project manager. What was it we're gonna make the ask of for the commissioners?
We, February of twenty twenty, we approved resolution thirteen twenty, basically saying that the council supports this in the, the ten-page document that we got about all of the habits that we want to see changed and things like that, but it never went anywhere after. We sat here and everybody in this room heard that we approved it, and that's kind of the end of it. We need to get that distributed out to the department heads, is my thoughts.
Is Mr. Jors still our project manager of the energy savings, uh, czar, so to say?
Is he on the call?
No, I'm asking you, I'm asking you, is Mr. Jors still the?
Yes.
Okay, Bob Jors?
Last I knew.
Okay, just wondered, why don't we have met him at a meeting one or two months ago? I just was curious if he's still.
They came to me and asked me, uh, kind of what was the status of this and, you know, we need to move forward, and some of the department heads, he goes in there and they don't really, it's not, I don't want, I don't want to make it sound worse than it is. It's not that he's getting a lot of pushback, but he's getting people like, you know, who are you? Why are we doing this? What's this about? I think if he had a document that the council and the commissioners have signed off on and said that, yes, we are fully on board with implementing these, this project, and we want to get this going as fast as possible. I think it's gonna open a lot more doors than what is currently happening.
I, I think that's a great idea. I think it's a great idea. And also wanted to thank you for giving us an update on ERP progress too. Thanks for doing that. You sent that out to us this week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan.
You're so welcome, but can we get, just so I'm not going rogue here, can we get, uh, some kind of thumbs up or something? Yes.
All in favor of Mr. Nolan's proposal?
Hi.
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 Opposed? The eyes have it. Mr. Nolan?
One other item, this probably is actually new business though, but, um, I wanted to remind the, um, auditors office, I guess the time of year, we need to be taking a look at our cum cap development funding. Is that in the plans or in the works, or you have already done it and decided we don't need to do anything?
Uh, may I, may I respond, Councilman? This is Steve Dalton, and, uh, the auditor has asked me to look at, at calculation and report back to him yet this week, so I have a couple of days left to give him that response.
That's unacceptable.
Isn't it the case, Steve, preliminarily, it looks like we, they might not have moved very much at all? That is, that is my initial in, uh, comment to you, and I was gonna put that in writing to you, Mike. It left, it, it came down less than one tenth of one penny.
Right, so when we get the hard numbers, we'll get it to them and, and they can make a decision. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Under new business, uh, Mr. Murphy, we have acknowledgement of the twenty twenty outstanding pur, purchase orders?
Right, this is John Murphy. A few years ago, we started, Steve reminded us that we needed to provide the county council with a list of outstanding purchase orders at the end of the year, and so we've sent that out to you. I'm sure, as you received, it was a PDF document of sixty-three pages. The total amount is, of purchase orders outstanding is ten million, one hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Typically, purchase orders are, are larger capital projects, and also can be for smaller operating costs where the invoice may have come in after the end of the year. Happy to answer any questions regarding that report.
Any questions from council for Mr. Murphy on the twenty twenty outstanding purchase orders?
More of a procedural question maybe, but, so we, we need to acknowledge the outstanding purchase orders, but we don't have to acknowledge the average or the below-average purchase orders?
Right, right.
That took a while.
Well, well played. That's bad, that's bad.
Nothing further.
Any other comments? Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Morton?
Hi.
Opposed?
Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Opposed. I, I wanted to catch you under unfinished business, or I'm sorry, new business. Um, and I know you sent out an email last Friday about the proposed Senate Bill one sixty-four for the innkeeper's tax increase that the Indiana State Senate is hearing today for the first time. And I, I, I probably didn't have time to respond. I sent another email back after tonight. My question to you, um, was, would our meeting on the twenty-fifth of February and subsequent, subsequent vote in March be a little, so to say, too late to the party in terms of showing support for that resolution?
No, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Katanzright.
Well, yeah, I was curious, because I know the Senate has a deadline of February twenty-second. That's their, um, deadline for, um, reading of bills for the third time, so that's their deadline. And I don't know if our resolution would be beneficial to them prior to that point, or prior to them deciding whether or not to go forward with it. That was my question. That's, I know that, that's what I was, my understanding.
Okay, I, I guess there's some confusion on, on my part, or, um, miscommunication, maybe I'll say, because I, I did respond to your email.
I, I saw, I saw your responses. I, I didn't know if I got a chance to talk about the one tonight, but my question's more about, I know, I know we've got Rob coming on the twenty-fifth. Is there any need or necess, necessity for us to consider that bill before the twenty-fifth is my question?
Okay, there again, there, there may be some miscommunication or misunderstanding on, on my part, and if so, I will apologize in advance. But I did have this conversation with Mr. DeKleen as far as the timing of this. Um, and I, I'm not gonna say, uh, specifically as far as the letter of, um, support, but at the same time, I believe that was part of our conversation, and I, I particularly asked him. time, I believe that was part of our conversation. And I particularly asked him if he comes and gives us a detailed overview of, you know, maybe the possible distribution, how everything is going to move forward. If the bill is passed, because as, as everyone knows, if it passes downstate, then we are the ones who decide ultimately what the increase would be, I believe, seven or up to eight percent. So my understanding was that if he comes on the, on our, in our February committee meeting and we vote in March, then that would, that would be fine. Because I made it a point to ask him that. But as far as how that has to do with the letter of support, I guess I'm gonna say I'm not sure. But like I said, the main thing is, I wanted to make sure that I asked him about that, about the letter. Because now, wait a minute, now that I think about it, I did ask him about the letter of support. So maybe, maybe he's looking at it wrong because as far as the deadline you just gave, because now that I think about it, I asked him, I said, well, hey, as far as this letter of support is concerned, because I talked to Jennifer about it, and my concern was getting this out and each council person not having enough time and/or enough understanding as far as all the detailed information of this bill. And that's when I called and asked him that, and he said, no, it should be fine if he came in February and we voted in March.
Okay. I just want to make sure, again, we have the proper timeliness of it, so we're not losing the effect of our support if we decide to give it support. That was, that was what my question centered on. So I think you've answered that.
Like, like I said, I-
I think you've answered that for me.
Like I said, I made it a point to ask him that in detail because I share those same concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
Hi.
This meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye.